Please. The Pledge Allegiance. Evening, everybody. Just want to remind everybody to silence their cell phones at this time. And then we did have a closed session meeting previous to our regular meeting, and there is no reportable action at this time. Regarding that meeting. Okay. We'll skip to item number five. This is special presentations and our announcements. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments, or awards we were seated by the city council or to the city council. This is for a fire department appointment of Austin Wilkenhausen as a volunteer to the fire department by Fire Chief Jerry. And then we have B first five Siskiyou Child Abuse Prevention Council Collaborative Proclamation Steve Ryan and item C since County Local Transportation Commission Melissa Cummins tonight for our special presentation. So Chief Lemus first. Good evening.
Turn these lights on. I'm just taking a hundred. One of these. Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations.
Right. Congratulations again, and welcome to the department. We really appreciate it. Okay, so five B is the first five Siskiyou Child Abuse Prevention Council Collaborative Proclamation with Steve Brian.
Hi, good evening. Mayor Milton, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Do you want me to read it? Okay. I can do that.
Thank you. By the way, I'm Stephen Brian. I'm with the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which includes the seven family community resource centers in Waireka, Scott Valley, Montague, Weed, Dunceber, Mount Shasta, and McLeod. And honored to be here. Thank you.
Is the proclamation in here or is it on there? Must be in my folder here. That has it. I must have skipped over it.
I have a copy if you need it.
I have it here. I have it here. Oh, I thought it. I have. I passed over it. All right. Okay. So the state's April 2024 Siskiyou Child Abuse Prevention Council and Collaborative Proclamation, where is to become healthy adults? All children deserve to live in a safe, stable, and nurturing homes and communities, whereas children are vital to Siskiyou County's prosperity and the future success. Whereas the people of Siskiyou County believe the celebration of life, inclusion, and hope through our children, and deplore and condemn acts of violence committed upon the children of our communities. Whereas the lives of our children who have been hurt or lost to child abuse are honored by studying their stories in order to prevent future abuse and protect the innocence, health, and lives of all county's children. Whereas child abuse, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our society. Whereas child abuse neglect sexual assault prevention is a community responsibility affecting both current and future generations. Whereas research has shown an enormous impact, the positive parenting practices of the child's social, emotional, intellectual development of future success. Whereas communities that understand the importance of prevention and support for the well-being of citizens thrive and prosper. Whereas effective child abuse and sexual assault prevention succeed because of partnership among citizens and all sectors of the county. Whereas April is the month to focus public attention on the needs of all children and prevention of sexual assault. Whereas the leadership dedication encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing child abuse and sexual violence in Siskiyou County. Therefore, we hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention and Sexual Assault Awareness Month, as well as April 6th through the 12th, 24th, as a week of the young child. We call upon citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse abuse and strengthening families and communities in which we live.
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Appreciate that. We also wanted to point out a few of our activities that we do here locally in the Waireka community with the Waireka Community Resource Center. For Week of the Young Child, we're working with all daycares, preschools, and elementary schools to get everybody to wear blue on the same day and plant pinwheel gardens, which we'll be assisting with. And for the daycares, the most creative photo that they send us is going to win a yogurt parfait party that we'll be throwing for them. And then on April 4th, at the Resource Center here in Waireka, we have a Children's Spring Carnival with arts and crafts games and healthy snacks. And that's from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the 4th. We did this a week prior to Week of the Young Child because everybody's on spring break, so we could have more people attend that as well. We, since the end of the pandemic, we've had two very successful parenting classes and support groups going on Wednesday nights and Thursday nights here in Waireka at the Resource Center. From 5:30 to 7:30, we offer playgroups on Monday mornings for children zero to five and young families, so they could get out of isolation, make new friends, and build their support groups. And we also provide many application assistance and other resource and programs at the Resource Center Tuesday through Friday from 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. If we don't have the resource ourselves to provide, we connect them to that resource locally in the county. So those are just a few of the things we do to help support young families and children. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. Appreciate everything you do.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, so Mr. Brian's going to stick around for a while, and then after we get to the consent agenda, once that his item is on consent, so once it's passed, we'll have you sign, and then we'll hand him the proclamation at that point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leibner.
And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just want to make an announcement that we've had some technical difficulties with the three monitors here, and so they are not working. There are people that will participate as our attorney is on Zoom, so they're still on Zoom. They can hear us. They can see us. Unfortunately, we just cannot see the screen, so bear with us tonight. We don't think it will be rectified.
All right. I was sorry to say something. Thank you. All right. Five C, this is County Local Transportation Commission Melissa Cummins. Well, her presentation. Hello. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay now? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, City Council staff. My name is Melissa Cummins. I'm the Executive Director for the Siskiyou County Local Transportation Commission. And I'm here this evening to kind of give you a little overview of what we are, who we are, and some projects we have going on that involve your jurisdiction, as well as the other nine agencies that we work with at the commission. So we have a wonderful PowerPoint, but as your city manager mentioned, our technology is a wonderful thing until it doesn't work. So bear with me on this. So I'm going to go to the second slide of your printout. So the Local Transportation Commission, although it says Siskiyou County, I want to stress, we are not part of the county. We're actually a separate legal entity. My commission is made up of members of city councils, which Mr. McCoy serves on, and then also members of the Board of Supervisors. And so we have kind of a mixed representation. Our role is we are the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, or RTPA for the region. So our responsibility is to make sure that we are managing the transportation planning as a whole for all of our agencies here in the county. And I mentioned earlier, we have 10 agencies. So we have all nine cities plus the county public works. And actually, if you add in stage, we have 11 that we work with on a regular basis. So we also act as a liaison. And so you've seen me here in the past talking with Caltrans, and we interact a lot with them through the course of various projects at different phases. And so that's one of my roles is to be a liaison between the cities, and some of our cities have not as many staff. And so we're trying to really be engaged with Caltrans and making sure that the city's voices are being heard when they're working with Caltrans on future projects. And then we have a few programs that we manage, and so we're going to talk about those a little bit tonight. So on the next slide that says coordination activities, this kind of gives you a little overview of some of the stuff we've been working on recently, including the Happy Camp Complete Streets project that is on 96 down in Happy Camp. There's also some work on a project in McLeod that we've been engaged with. We've been working with Caltrans a little bit on the Highway 3 project, but that was already full-blown into construction when I came back into this position in August. And then we've got some other ones on there. Some other work we've been doing is on the local STIP projects. We're constantly in communication with your staff about where they're at, if they need any assistance. Do we need to schedule a meeting with Caltrans to work out any sort of blips in the process? And so that's something we're actually planning going forward in, starting in next year, that we're going to start doing quarterly meetings with your staff, so we can catch any of those issues early on in the process and make sure it doesn't cause a delay once you get through into the important parts, the construction piece of the projects. The monitoring grant opportunities, we are constantly looking for more and many. And trust me, there is lots of money out there right now. So that's one of the goals is to try to pursue and making sure that all of our local representatives are aware of these opportunities, but also looking at how can we partner and utilize our combined resources to go after those funds? Because we recognize that, you know, each of our agencies may have the same need, but if we pull together and work together as a group, we can go after that. And we're going to touch on one of those opportunities here at the end. And then the transportation stakeholder engagement, we're actively involved in Rural County's Task Force, North State Superregion. These are all of our advocacy agencies that are at the state explaining to them why we need certain things or why certain things are infringing on our ability to put projects on the ground. So moving on to the next slide. This kind of highlights some of our funding programs. The first one on that list is the Regional Surface Transportation Block Grant. And the city has actually taken advantage of this program in years past. And so it's basically funding that allow you to fix sidewalks. It'll allow you to put in bike lanes. It's very flexible because we take federal. And the city has actually taken it. What was that? Okay, we take federal dollars and we exchange them for state money. And so that makes it much easier to put projects on the ground because we don't have to abide by the federal requirements. This amount of money is about $100,000 a year, so it's not a huge pot of money. But when we pool it for a couple of years, we've been able to fund some rather large projects. So the other funds that are listed there, local transportation funds, those are partly for transit operations. And since the city is a member agency with stage, you contribute a portion of your funds to the transit operation, and then a portion comes to the city to pay for streets and roads improvements. And then the, under the transit funding sources, you'll see a whole bunch of names. Those are all transit-specific pots of money that are managed by the commission, but ultimately go to our one and only public transit operator, which is stage. And then the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, we're going to go a little bit deeper into on the next slide. Unless anybody has any questions. Okay. So we call this the R-TIP. I like to say at every one of my presentations, if you worked in government long enough, you know, we like our acronyms, and there are a lot of them. So the R-TIP is also known as the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. Each region in the state adopts this program, and then it goes up to the California Transportation Commission and is adopted into the state transportation improvement program or the STIP. So the important part for you to know is that we do this every other year. And so this last fall, we sat down with every single one of our agencies. I went out to Doris and Tulley Lake and Mount Shasta, came here and sat down with your staff and talked about what your concerns were, what your projects were, what hurdles you had to completing those projects, and what challenges you have collectively that we may be able to go after those grant monies. So through that process, we ask all of the cities and the County Public Works Department to give us our wish list items for this program. The wish list totaled about $20 million. We only had 6.8 million to spend. So obviously, there's a little disparity there, which we already knew that. That's normal. It's not surprising. And so all of the other presentations I've done up to this point, I've said, well, we're fingers crossed that they're not going to ask us to reduce. So in January, the CTC held their public hearing. They had a statewide 60, I think it was 65 million over the available funds for this next round of programming. So they went back, they reviewed everybody's programs that the regions submitted, and our fingers were crossed because we asked for 30,000 less than our designated amount. We figured if we ask for less, maybe they'll just kind of leave ours alone and give us what we were hoping for. And so I'm pleased to report that they actually adopted the STIP two weeks ago, and ours was as submitted, no changes requested. So we got our full programming, which is excellent. And so then if you go to the next slide in your presentation packet, the R-TIP for the city of Waireka, currently you have no projects programmed. I think at the time that was at the request of your staff because you had so many other things going on here in the city that there was, they had enough on their plate, I think. And so the next round of programming, they did request the Nap Street project. And that's a little over $2.5 million. And so that project was fully funded for all phases in this next R-TIP. So that's exciting for the city. Okay. And then my little PowerPoint thing. So on the bottom of that slide, you'll notice that there's a disclaimer, and it basically says that the interactive map that we were going to show you, it has all of the proposed projects in the entire region. And there's actually a way to go in and pick which agency you're in and look at your specific project information. It pulls up the document that was submitted to the California Transportation Commission. And that's actually a requirement for the commission to make this publicly available. And so on that map, we were asked to make sure to put a disclaimer because we want the residents to understand that these projects that are included are nominated by you, the agency. If you come back to me and say, hey, you know what, we've had a change of plans, something went south, we need to pull that project and replace it with this one, or you want to defer that project another two years, that is totally your call. You just have to submit that request to us, and we're going to go based on what the city has requested. And so I want to make sure it's clear that the, in the project's program or request form, it has proposed dates. Those are not a guarantee. Things change, finances change, priorities change. And so we just want to make sure. So that's what that little disclaimer says is basically that this is at your discretion. So and I would have showed you that, but we'll move on. So the next slide is actually a little video that I was going to show you where you can find that map. But if you go to the Local Transportation Commission page on the county website, you will find all of ours. And on your printouts, I actually put a little asterisk by the subtitle for where it's the R-TIP STIP, and that's where you can find that interactive mapping, go in and play with it a little bit. Okay. Moving on to the Siskiyou County Pavement Management System. So this is actually a project we've been working on since 2015. The commission awarded a contract for the original build of the program and then subsequent work in 2017. And then we actually just, they awarded another three-year contract in December to do another update. And so why is this important to the city? This program is actually, my understanding is that the program has provided you, the city council, and the residents data to demonstrate the need for your streets and roads funding that was part of your tax measure. And so so that's exciting that you were actually able to use the data that we have in the system. So the system hasn't been updated since 2019. And so that's important to keep in mind for the next slide I'm going to show you. But what I want you to know is that with this new contract, the last update we have for Waireka was 2019. And on that slide, you'll see the next update is 2026. And then there's a picture of a truck there. So the the truck will be coming around. They won't be here until 2026. But when they do come around, they're going to be driving up and down every single section of paved roads in the city limits. And so you may have residents calling, and we're going to work with your staff to say they will be here on this date. And if residents have questions, we're going to refer them to your city staff to explain what we're doing. But we want you to be aware that this truck will be driving around. It's fully equipped with all sorts of radars and mechanical pieces of equipment. It's going to look very odd, for lack of a better word, but there is a reason that they're there, and we want you to make, we want you to know about it. So if you get any inquiries, you can say, oh, yes, we understand what they're doing. It's a good thing. You know, we want them to be there. Okay. And on that, I did want to mention too that this project is fully funded by the commission. So we've contributed, we pay for the licensing, which is about $26,000 a year. And then the commission has allocated funds to do all of the updates. So over a three-year contract, this last one that was awarded was about $200,000. Okay. So then the next slide actually shows you, on the top of that slide, you'll see collectively as an entire region, we have five square miles of paved roads in the county that all of our agencies have to maintain. And then on the far right in the upper corner there, you'll see a PCI of 46. So PCI is a pavement condition index. So it's basically like a measurement, if you will, of what the road looks like. So then if you go to the bottom or the middle section in the bottom, that's actually your specific agency's information. So you have .35 square miles of pavement to maintain. And your average PCI is 50 right now. So remember on the last slide, I said the last update was 2019. So it's only as good as the data that was in the system as of 2019. So kind of keep that in mind. So yes, it looks like it's better collectively than the entire region, but your data is from 2019. So when we do the next round of updates, then you'll really start to see, and I know you've been spending a lot of money doing road projects here in the city. So you'll start to see those numbers kind of come to reality once we do that next update. Okay. Last on my big list is the Active Transportation Plan. So we are actively working on the development of a regional active transportation plan. This is a project that's funded by the California Active, California Transportation Commission's Active Transportation Program. And so we're, we've been working on collecting all of our existing data, working with the city's staff and making sure that we have existing bike lanes, existing sidewalks, as much as we're able to pull together. So the consultant has the existing conditions report, and that will actually be presented to the LTC next week at their regular meeting. And then the, our TAC, which is consists of all of our public works directors countywide, have already had a chance to review it and look at the maps and everything. So they have already been engaged in this project. So the, the next slide has the timeline. So we're well into the bringing up all the data together, getting it ready to go. And then we're getting ready to start our public outreach. And so that's part of why I wanted to come talk with you this evening. On the next slide that says engagement strategies, this lists out everything that we've been doing. So we've engaged the TAC. We have been doing the community opinion survey. And there's actually a link to that survey in your packet. And there's actually, which when I looked at it yesterday, there's lots of folks are going in there and adding comments about suggestions in the city limits for Waireka. So that's very exciting to see. People are really engaged in that project. And so in addition to that, we're doing open house. I do want to report that our open house for North County is scheduled for April 24th from 4:30 to 6:00 at the Siskiyou County Transit Center in the conference room. And so that is a public event. The public is welcome to come talk to our consultants, give them suggestions, look at the maps, and you know, really engage with our consultant directly. So and then we will also be doing walk audits of each of the incorporated cities. And so for Waireka, our consultant will be here on April 24th. They're going to do the walk audit in the morning, and then we'll have our open house that afternoon. So city staff is welcome to join the consultant. If you want to see what they're doing and kind of walk around town with them, give them some insight into your specific community, they'd be happy to do that for you. And then we will also be doing eight community events, and hopefully yours is highlighted. We are proposing to attend the Waireka Gold Rush Days event to do some really engaging, interactive discussions with the community. So if you have other suggestions about other community stakeholders we should include, let me know. We're happy to add them to our list. And then the next slide is actually, I was going to show you how to do the little comment thing on the thing, but we'll keep going. So we talked about, on the next step slide, we talked about the existing conditions report that is already going to, it'll be fully available next week. If you have any other information that you feel is pertinent to the project, please let us know. And then we would ask that you help us promote the survey. So I know the city has a Facebook page because I happen to be on it. And then those open house and walk audits. And then there's actually the project page, which gives you the full about the project, the events that are going on. We're going to be putting up the flyer about the open house. And so we really hope that you'll join us in that effort. And then lastly, on the final slide, looking to the future, things we're working on. The Regional Transportation Plan, which is another countywide planning document, is due to start an update in the fall of this year. And so that will require staff time. It will require projects. We need to have those lists of projects so we can put them in that document. And we've already sat down with your staff and talked about it and got them thinking about what's that 10 and 20-year look like for each of your agencies. So and then zero emissions. We are all very, very aware that that is a big topic at the state level. So we're trying to work with our partners and figuring out how we can all kind of partner together and all get there without everybody having to reinvent that wheel privately. So and then the evacuation and preparedness plan, I just want to touch on that very briefly. That is actually a grant application. When I met with the cities in October, that was one thing that I heard was that multiple agencies had an interest in having an evacuation and emergency preparedness plan. So this document is really designed at identifying transportation evacuation routes for our residents if that were to happen again, which we've kind of become used to now. And so, and then that will also put us in line for future funding for improvements to those evacuation routes should that we, you know, once we get that finalized. So and that is all I have for you. We would love it if you would follow us on our Facebook page. We are in the process, actually, just, we just started a build of a new website last week. And so we'll be transitioning over, but we'll have some transition time there. So do check us out. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I appreciate your time this evening.
All right. Questions? Question? All right.
Melissa, do you know what the status is on the the timeline for, I see Caltrans is doing the turnouts going down to Happy Camp on 96. They've got it marked off. Can you elaborate on, I mean, how many turnouts they're actually working on? They don't say anything on the sign other than your tax dollars at work turnout.
I don't, but I will look at their project list, and I will follow up with their staff and get you an answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, Councilor Baker?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. It was really very informative. I do have one question for you about the open houses. How are you guys getting the word out to the public that the open houses are happening?
So we are planning on putting flyers out at as many of the locations as we can. We send them to all of our city contacts. I was actually going to print some and bring them down to City Hall here. It's also going to be posted. The event itself is already posted on our Facebook page. And then whenever I put up a event on my Facebook page, I tag the county, and then the county PIO shares it on the county's Facebook page. And so, and then we're working with our local partners. So we do have Siskiyou Outdoor Recreation Alliance, who is actually our public outreach component of our consulting team. And so they're also working on sending it out to all of their stakeholders as well. So, thank you. Absolutely.
Any other questions for council members? Councilor Davis?
Miss Cummins, I was kind of wondering about this, looking to the future, the zero emissions.
Yes.
And what are, what are you posing there or have you not made that up yet?
Where's, our initial conversations with the cities is what do you have? Have you thought about it? Do you have a plan? Um, many of our smaller agencies, especially off the I-4 corridor, don't have anything. And you know, they're just trying to keep things running on a day-to-day basis. So we kind of did a, an evaluation. Um, the county also did a recent grant application in coordination with RCRC to try to do a plan, um, a zero emission readiness plan that would encompass the entire county. And so we're waiting to kind of see what um, the result is from that grant application. And if they get that, then we've already expressed an interest in being involved in that. And it would also include all of the cities. So I'm not sure what the timeline is on that one.
About how far down the line are you looking there?
As far as when it would be implemented or when the grant would be awarded?
Implementation.
Well, if you look at transit, transit has to be fully zero emissions by 2040. And um, the initial assessments we've done on the transit side is electric is not going to be an option for our fleets and our location due to climate, uh, distance traveled, mountains, all of the things that we love and enjoy here. Um, as far as the other side of things, I'm not sure on that one. I would have to do some more, have some more conversations with them and see what the plan is. So.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate.
Question?
Yeah, what was, who was the last uh, big project Waireeka you, um, coinciding with Waireeka on?
And the RTIP? Hmm. I think Oregon Street.
I think that's.
The one that you just awarded.
That's what I was thinking it was too. I'm like trying to go back. I'm like, I think it was Oregon Street was the last big project.
Yeah, and that project actually got put in this, the RTIP, when I was the executive director the last time. So that tells you how long it's been in the works. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you did have a couple of RSTP projects that I mentioned. Um, we had consulted with the city staff um, a few months ago. And I think the decision was to pull it out right now, just because you have so much going on here that you don't have the capacity to do that. So those funds are always available.
Yeah, I'll just chime in on that. So we had some knickknack projects that were like $80,000 that really weren't worth mobilization. And I'd say that's the biggest issue with transportation is that a big project for us is going to be a million-dollar STIP project on Southern Oregon. That is not enough money, nowhere near enough money to do the project correctly. So it's nice to hear that NAP is approved. I wasn't made aware of that. So that's a wonderful project, $2 million. But um, yeah, the last one, well, the two Oregon sides would be my guess, right? You guys did north and now we're about to do south here this spring.
Yes. Yeah, and the, the challenge with that is, as I mentioned, we have 10 agencies. $6 million doesn't go very far. But we always try to make sure every agency has something in that pro, that program to look forward to during, and then we update it every two years. So, but yeah, that's exciting stuff. Absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay. Move on to items uh, number six. This is public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited to all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the city council when that item is opened up, open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed or posted on the agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comment concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium, the podium electronically just up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the city council as a whole. If you have a document to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become a public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on a future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the city council or city staff. That public comment at this time.
Glenn White, City of Waireeka, this is your Greenhorn Park and Greenway update. Well, we have some new vandalism at the blacksmith shop. The wall was kicked in into the closed area, also the open area uh, inside the blacksmith shop has yet to be repaired after 16 months after the first report. So uh, by the way, uh, there's also vandalism to the stamp mill. Uh, on April 27th, the Siskiyou County Historical Society is going to be doing a walking tour and presentation at Greenhorn Park in the mining area. It might be nice if we had some nice new repaired buildings out there so that it'll shine on our wonderful city. There are a bunch of dead and danger trees in and around the Dwight and Daisy Roberts bench. That's a high area of use. Uh, one of the trees actually blew, snapped off and that's three feet from the bench. So there are some trees that need to come down. Sidewinder Trail is completely impassable with blowdown trees and several widow makers. A pretty dangerous situation up in that area also. There are currently two illegal camp dump sites. Both of them very large in the area that has seasonal streams that empty into Greenhorn Creek, that then empty into Greenhorn Reservoir, which is now, I understand, our city backup water supply. You might want to take a look at that. There was, there was a report of a mountain lion in the area. Uh, I picked up the track, it ended up being a bobcat. And also there was, there's a report of elk at the west end of Greenhorn Park. The Greenway is a atrocious disaster. The Welcome Center behind the museum looks pretty good, actually. Uh, no illegal camps, graffiti is still on the bridge after, I don't know, what, nine months? Uh, the Mount Shasta Title Entrance. There are seven active illegal camps that have been there for more than two-plus months. Uh, these camps include illegal fires and dumps in and about and into Waireeka Creek and a protected adagamous fisheries. Federal protected adagamous fisheries. Uh, and also, of course, that's a critical infrastructure issue. If I believe you did pass some kind of an ordinance, couldn't tell. Vandalism to the doggy bag uh, box has been torn off the post at that entrance. The floating bridge is out, uh, which of course is an IDA access issue and needs to be taken care of. There is racist graffiti on the walkway and also new graffiti as of 4/1. They even dated it and they put their names. So it shouldn't be too hard to figure out who did it. The east side of the creek has four active illegal camps, also with trash dumps and along the water's edge. Uh, there are also three stolen shopping carts at these camps full of their stuff. I-5 Edge, uh, there are two active camps with trash dumps at or in the waterway. Uh, once again, this is a protected adagamous fisheries, can't have dumps in and about and around, needs to get cleaned up. Really, after not making a report here for about three months, which is kind of a social experiment by myself, it appears realistic because the main issue is lack of enforcement. Period. Just a lack of enforcement. And by the way, seeing as how they just killed off Klamath River, each one of these side streams and substreams that go into the Shasta River are now more important than ever because that may be the only way that we will ever be able to repopulate that now-dead river. So please take the time, please issue direction to employees to take care of these issues that need to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jan Osborne and I live in Waireeka, California. And today I received my City of Waireeka Utilities Bill with the Waireeka Today insert. And that's why I'm here. On my bill, I noticed that the water rate increase has set in. Last month, it was $38 and some change. This time it's 42 and some change. Now that seems like a small amount, but when I thought about something I've talked to a couple council members about, I don't know that I've said here, that the city is giving our water away. There is a program through Behavioral Health, it's grant-funded, which means taxpayer-funded. It's being advertised as free 15-minute shower and free two loads of laundry. Supposedly two times a month, and I was told by Madeline at Behavioral Health through June, but I have heard that it's also through the end of the year. Now, I saw nothing on an agenda about approving donating the use of Waireeka's water and also the property off of Ranch Lane, which is um, the property where a trail rider and the Grange, old Grange building are located. Are not, the city is not getting any compensation for that. So they're giving away the water. I'm paying more for my water and it's being given to the county so they can give free showers to the homeless who contribute nothing to the city utilities. They contribute nothing to my quality of life. And it upsets me as a citizen that I'm being charged more and it's being given away. That was the first thing. And then I went to the Waireeka Today, what's happening in our city? And I thought, of course, I was kind of on a tear by then after that other thing. What's happening to our city is what I thought it should be saying. Now, this is, this one is mainly about the fire department and the possibility of a sales tax increase. To me, it was a campaign piece in favor of the sales tax. And that's how it read to me, my opinion. I want to say at the outset that I have utmost appreciation and respect for our fire department and the volunteer firefighters and especially for Chief Lemos. His leadership, I think, is outstanding. That being said, this piece, I think, is not straightforward. If you are trying to inform the people who will be voting on this sales tax, if you do approve it, but this pretty much solidifies it for me that that's where you're going. Let me read this to you. Residents may be surprised to learn that, except for the fire chief, Waireeka firefighters are all volunteers, many with other full-time jobs. Okay? I'm going to pause here and say congratulations to Austin Winkelhausen for volunteering because I love people who volunteer to serve their community because you're serving me. I appreciate it. But I think as a voter and a constituent, we need the full story. I checked. The assistant fire chief is also a part, is a part-time employee. So it's not true to say except for the chief. Are all volunteers and all volunteers is underlined. Please explain volunteers. Volunteer has different men, uh, meanings. I was a volunteer when I belonged to the Lioness Club. I paid to be in the Lioness Club. And I did projects, raised money to help build the playground at Greenhorn and the gazebo, various other projects. My husband volunteered in the United States Air Force, served for 20 years. That was his kind of volunteering, but, but he was compensated. I think it's important that the voters know that the volunteers, the firefighters, do get compensation. And they have to in California. I think it's almost a law now. They're, they're paid for each call, they're paid for their, when they go to their training.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will talk to each of you individually and finish this.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Stephen Bryan, Regional Pro, Regional and Program Director at Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative. Um, we're working under a grant with the state on outreach. We're part of the state's trusted messenger network and with the Governor's Office of Community Partnership at Strategic Communications. And we were just awarded two more years under that grant. Um, this might not be very popular after the last comment, but we're here to talk about Save Our Water. And uh, we have some information, some flyers, both in English and Spanish. Uh, I was hoping that maybe the city could provide this information on their website as well, but it's information on about 40% of the water California's use at home is outdoors. And when we switch our thirsty lawns for water-wise plants, we can help save water. And there's some different uh, water-wise techniques like beautiful functional yards, low maintenance, and they're affordable. Um, there are no rebates available in Siskiyou County in any of the communities. And we'd love to uh, work with the City of Waireeka and any other community on looking for rebates that we can offer to our citizens and work with the state on providing those. So I brought those flyers. If you like digital copies for your website or more flyers for the uh, City Hall, I'd love to provide those as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Verdal McAllister. I'm a senior with disabilities and a former professional dancer. Uh, with a resume that is quite significant. I was a tenant of property owner Eric Prescott at 618 Klamath Street for seven years. On February the 10th, I became the victim of a house fire. I am deeply traumatized by this catastrophe and so are my pets. They scattered, many of them scattered after the fire away from the house. Consequently, Mr. Prescott's permission, I was comfortably ensconced in my camper truck to remain close to my animals so they would know that I was nearby and that I had not abandoned them, so that I continue their feedings, et cetera. To my shock, I was visited by Willow Martin Gale, Dale, Code Enforcer, two county officials, and Officer Mark Gilman on March 6th of 2024 and ordered to vacate the premises. In a morally reprehensible manner, I was threatened to vacate the space in two and a half hours with my essentials or face a fine of $100 if I dared enter the house. The reason for this was because I did not, quote, "have running water or power outlet." What? Why was I targeted? Also, when hundreds of folks in my situation in Waireeka, those without facilities, living in motorhomes or trucks, also do not have the same facilities without water and without power. With the threat of a $100 fine per day, how could I possibly secure, clean, pack my belongings to bring to a storage locker? I am totally dismayed by this county's lack of humanity in my regard and the immeasurable expenditures I've incurred staying in a motel on an SSI budget. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? All right, I will close public comment. We're going to go to item seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove. unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Item seven, or I'm sorry, A, Approval Ratification of Payments Issued March twenty, or sorry, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-four to March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. B, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Agenda Meeting Held March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. C, Appointment of Austin Winklevossen as a volunteer to the Waireca Fire Department. D, Adoption of the April two thousand and twenty-four Siskiyou Child Abuse Prevention Council Collaborative Proclamation. E, Approval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen of the City Council, the City of Waireca authorizing submission of an application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Homes Investment Partnerships Program and execution of a standard agreement if selected. F, Approval of the Waireca Police Department to apply for an equipment grant through the Arthur R. Debs Foundation. G, Approval of Lease Agreement Through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven for four hundred South Foothill Drive, assesses parcel number to the County of Siskiyou for Bridge Housing and Support Services. I did have a request from Councilman Baker, if okay, from the council to call for discussion. She has some questions. That was item seven E. If that's okay? Seven E. Yep, she has some questions for the person online for that item. Okay, so the recommend City Council, I come to some council action before you, is the motion to opposite agenda, the City Council of the City of Waireca as presented, actually, with the removal of seven E for a discussion.
What, and what is the discussion that the councilwoman has on E? Because it's a very, it's a very routine, it's a very routine resolution.
She had questions and she asked for it to be pulled, so she has questions for the design from the, I guess, as a community director, a development community director?
Yeah, we, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we do have Dan Co. on the line here, just specifically for that, to answer any questions for anybody, so.
All right. Is that okay?
So does that, if Dan goes on the line, that would necessitate not needing to pull it because the councilman and councilwoman could ask their questions of Dan Co. at this time?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying. She.
She, the councilwoman has questions. This is, Dan Co. is the one that, who is, we're working with on this item. Dan Co. was on the phone right now for such questions. They would be willing to answer the questions. Therefore, not necessitating having to bring it back at another meeting and add it in on another consent agenda. It is a very routine matter. If you, if you look, if you look over the the resolution, it is very routine. So I think what would be probably more advantageous to us as a council and the city would be to go ahead and open it, open up for questions to Dan Co., Mr. Mayor, and then hopefully get all our questions answered so that we can then go ahead and include it. And, and because this, this is a routine agenda item. There's nothing, there's no there, there, whatever they say, you know?
Correct. So.
Just to clarify, that this is normal practice, that the item is not kicked to the next meeting. It just is become the normal item. You would approve consent, hopefully, and then you would move on to that particular item to open up discussion, and then you would vote that item individually tonight, would be my.
Correct. She's pulling it from the agenda for now to have discussion with Dan Co. But we're looking for approval of the rest of the items, and then we'll go to item seven E for a question. So Dan Co. Right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move seven A, B, C, D, F, and G as presented.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Cake.
Second that.
And a second from Councilman Davis. I'll do roll call. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
And I, Mayor Middleton. So the motion passes and do we want to go to either E now or back when?
Yeah, you would immediately now just go to seven E as its own individual item.
All right. Okay, so now we're going back to seven E for questions for Dan Co. This is Approval Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen of the City Council, City of Waireca authorizing the submission of the application for California Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Homes Investment Partnership Program and execution of a standard agreement if selected. So Councilman Baker?
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Councilmember Baker, if you don't mind, just real quickly, I'd like to ask the clerk a question.
Sure.
Clerk, can you make, can you allow, I believe, Chris to enter into the conversation and to engage? So Councilmember Baker, when she does ask her questions, Chris is able to respond?
Hi, this is Juliana. We can unmute ourselves and respond at any time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, and we have, so just very quickly, before you go into our questions, I'm available as well. But we do have Chris Dart and Cameron Dart from the Dan Co. group available, as well as Chris Westlake, who is also helping them with the home grant application. And so Chris Westlake is a previous Housing and Community Development Director for the State of California, and so he's helping with some of the specifics of the grant program and application itself. So if you have questions about the grant program specifically, I think he can handle that. But just to introduce this item very quickly, since you're opening up for questions. So the project itself is along Deer Creek Way. A portion of that property will be purchased as part of this project, assuming financial backing and enough tax credits and grant funding for that. And so this project right now is, we're trying to prepare the financial package for a proposal for a forty-five unit, excuse me, complex that would be on a portion of ten acres that would be purchased from a larger piece of property. So one thing to note about this is that you're not approving a project. You're not approving a tentative parcel map at this time. That application will have to come back to the city to go through the proper processes. We're just bringing this to you because Dan Co. is requesting that the city be the fiscal sponsor for this grant, which meets our housing program two point one point five. And so we need to get the funding package arranged prior to more solidified details related to the project. But again, it will have to go through all of our standard approvals and processes as any other project. And so if you'll remember from the last meeting, we did a public hearing related to the Shadows Garden project, which is a Section Eight Low Income project that's receiving funding actually through this home grant program through a previous cycle. And so if you'll remember, the home grant program has a three-year delay typically in funding, a two- to three-year delay. And so we get our funding packages together a significant amount of time ahead of, of the regular project. And so that's why this is coming to you in a slightly different order than what typically happens with some of these projects. But again, we do have the entire team on board for you to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. And my questions have to do with, in the paperwork that was submitted by the city under project description, it states that the site design and unit types are not known at this time. And yet, in the resolution, it says under item number one, that the new construction of forty-five units of family affordable apartments. And my question has to do with, if my memory serves me correctly, last year, we had the opportunity to sit down and take a look at different designs of affordable housing. And one of the things that we discussed at length was bungalow-type housing. And so I'm just curious that if this paperwork is submitted as is, are we tied into apartment complexes? Or do we, as a city, city council, have the opportunity to have input into the design of this housing?
Sure. So there's a couple of different sections of your question, and I'll just kind of go through them in order. So first off, at the time of the staff report, we did not have a specific housing type identified, but it, it will be a collection of apartments very similar to the Siskiyou Crossroads development. One of the reasons for this project going with an apartment complex housing type rather than another type is that it's immediately located to another housing complex, and it's also located in our high-density residential, which allows apartments as a use-by-right. And so when we look at affordable housing or multi-unit housing, going back to the cottage cluster bungalow, that's more appropriate in areas where we want to be really cognizant of like scale or height of buildings, where this site is actually meant for taller and more heavy high-density under your current zoning code and general plan. The other item too is, the City Council does not have any design review over any projects within the city limits because of your zoning code and general plan currently. So the city does not have any design review related to any residential or commercial properties written within your zoning code. It's something that we've identified for the comprehensive update that we're going to be addressing for you. But this project, as it sits right now, without the home grant, is actually a use-by-right, and it would only be required to submit a site plan, which is a ministerial process with city staff. So under your current rules, it would not have any avenue to come back to you for design review. We do have some preliminary information from Dan Co., but I'm not sure if that's something they wanted to bring up tonight or not. If you have specific concerns, we can definitely take those right now, and Chris could probably address those. But again, under your current processes and protocols, you don't have any design review over any projects. And one of the side notes of this too is that this is a private property that Dan Co. is proposing to purchase themselves. So the city is not the landholder, and so we don't really have control over the particular details of the project itself. Now, as we go through and do other housing proposals and try to work with other housing developers, if it is on a city lot, it does give us as, quote-unquote, "the private property owner", more ability to influence the final design of that property. For example, Jason and I had been trying to work with our property over off of Ranch and Campus Drive, and there was a preliminary proposal for housing on that property that you would have a lot more input on because you serve as the private property owner at that time. But as it sits right now, regardless of the grant funding or not, the city does not have any special design approval or influence over this project.
Thank you for answering my question.
All right. Any other questions?
My question, basically, is, are we going for the apartments? Or are we gonna change the wording to units? As it is in the description. That's my question. Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm asking you.
I guess it'd be for Juliana, actually, not me. I didn't write it, so Juliana?
I'll defer to Chris Dart and Chris Westlake in terms of the, so the resolution specifically lists apartments. Is there any issue changing that verbiage to housing units rather than apartments? I'll let you guys take that.
Go ahead, Chris Westlake. I don't think there is. I think it's okay. Chris Westlake, do you have input?
Yeah, there's no, there's no issue. We could have either units or apartments on there. It just, we need, need to identify what the development is, and typically we say a forty-five-unit apartment complex. I believe we might have mentioned the name of it on the resolution. I'm pulling it up right now.
Oh, we did not have a name yet. I got the name today.
Okay. So we, we can change it to units if the council asks us to. We can put it that way. It wouldn't affect the resolution. It's the main focus of the resolution is it's authorizing the city to submit the application and for the city manager to be able to execute agreements if it was awarded.
All right.
And if I may, I'm, I'm fine with the terminology of apartments. I guess I just misunderstood that level of input the City Council would have into the different design of the, the housing units. So I appreciate everybody answering my questions.
Yeah, and really quick, again, if it's something where it's a city-owned property, yes, you have a lot more influence and you have a lot more input on those projects. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't have any proposals on a city-owned lot, although we're continuing to look at our inventory for sites that could be really good for the city to put up housing for. It just so happened that this was a, a, a deal between private property owner and the city's affordable development partner. And so there's, there's less of a design review at that time. The other thing too is, like I said, we are taking that into account, and we are putting design review into the ordinance updates that we're preparing with the general plan update.
Juliana, this is Jason. I, I just kind of have a question, I guess. If the city were to stand up this project on its own, though, we could hypothetically dictate the design standards, or if we were to pursue our own project in a similar vein, we could build cottage cluster?
You could, yes, but, so one of the programs in the housing element is that we have not held a vote to repeal Article thirty-four of the California Constitution. And so because we have not repealed Article thirty-four as a local jurisdiction, we are barred from putting up our own housing. So we would have to hold a local vote to do a local overturn of Article thirty-four, and then we could operate as a housing developer, in which case we have total design control of that project.
Thank you.
And the city attorney is on as well, if he wants to jump in too.
I want to thank the councilwoman for her questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. No further questions, and we'll go back to the approval of seven E. That's approval, say it again, Approval Resolution twenty fourteen dash fifteen, City Council of the City of Waireca authorizing the submission of an application.
I'm sorry, but I just, if we can check with our attorneys, it was polled. I'm not sure if we need to go to public comment on this item or not, but I'm not a hundred percent.
We'll ask Andrew. Andrew, do I go to public comment for seven E since we pulled it and had discussion?
Yeah, you probably should. I mean, but there was the opportunity for public comment, but this discussion has been pretty weighty, so it wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Any public comment before we go back for seven E? Okay, no public comments. I'll go back to council. Further wishes for seven E, Approval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen, City Council, the City of Waireca authorizing the submission of an application for the California Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Homes Investment Partnerships Program and execution of a standard agreement if selected.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Baker. And a second from Councilman Cake. I'll do roll call. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton, aye. Motion passes five to zero. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your questions and going through that. All right, so no old business, no public hearings, so we go, no new business. Now we go to rolling right along to city manager and staff reports. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, and Waireca City Council members, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So I have just a real brief report here. This Friday, I will be touring the new casino expansion and hotel with councilmembers Davis and Baker. Also, this Friday, we will have the groundbreaking ceremony for the start of the Carnegie Rehab Project. Public Works is currently working on the direct contracting for the HVAC at the Community Theater Project. We hope to have a quote to review here in about two weeks from today, at which point we will bring a contract in front of the council for review. And then since we had such wonderful weather, I know it's probably gonna go away for a little while. Just made me think that we are in the throes of hopefully spring. Some of the highlights this spring and summer will be the finalizing of the Burgess Street Sewer Project. And so what you'll notice is that there's work really hyper-focused around the Burgess Street neighborhood, but this also extends back into some of the residential on the other side of town. So in the Oak Street area and in a lot of the alleyways. Of town. So in the Oak Street area and in a lot of the um, alleyways, there's work being done right now. It's all a part of this Burgess Street project. Uh, we'll also have the Southern Oregon Rehab Project starting. Uh, in the same paver that's going to pave Southern Oregon is also paving the Burgess Street uh, neighborhood after the pipe is done. So that's going to be very helpful depending on where Caltrans is on Highway three. They'll be able to maneuver so that, you know, it's going to be difficult, but the traffic can get through town. Uh, and then um, the Director of Public Works uh, met with me today to talk about uh, the ideal situation for chip seal. Uh, this coming summer, but things kind of hinge on whether or not we are going to get kind of an ancillary grant. That would stand up um, kind of a rubberized chip seal. And we would be able to take care of some very problematic roads that we can't take care of without that rubberized chip seal. If we're not able to do that, there is an alternative plan and we will invest the four hundred thousand dollars into that alternative plan. You've seen the, you've seen Public Works out there crack ceiling at the moment, so. Some of that is done before they chip seal a road, and then sometimes that's just standard maintenance that happens. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mister Ledbetter. Okay. Go to city council members. Do I go first, Councilman Baker?
Thank you so much. So um, I, I don't have a lot to report. Um, I did attend the Warricka High School uh, musical, The Wizard of Oz, and it was just fabulous. Um, in addition to that, um, Mister Ledbetter and I had the opportunity to meet with the principal of Discovery High School. Um, and have a discussion with him about some of the issues that he faces on a daily basis. And uh, I, out of that conversation, I am considering volunteering at that site in some capacity. Maybe as resident grandma.
I will join you. If you do, please contact me. I'd love to join you on that.
Okay, all right. Um, and then I, I just have a couple of requests, uh, Mister Ledbetter. Would it be possible to put um, a link to the um, transportation plan survey? On the city's website as well as our Facebook page? Um, and then um. Do you know or do you have plans yet uh, for somebody from the city to participate, to, excuse me? Participate in the um, walk audit that they're planning on April twenty-fourth?
Uh, I will get with Public Works and see if they have someone from Rhodes that will be participating. And if not, we can have someone participate and we can definitely link to the website and we'll do a post um, this week. With that survey on our web, on our uh, Facebook.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank Councilman Baker. Councilman Davis?
We met, uh, the Fire Safe Council met via Zoom. And pretty much the uh, CalFire was reporting on what they were doing to continue their. Their fire saving, the uh, the area around here, Outston Road Project is one of them they've talked about. Um, we also got a lick in on our um. New attack vehicle and our ballot measure, so we got on, and they seemed to know more about it than I did when I was reporting on it, so. It, it was there. So Jerry was stood up for, not very well, but he was stood up for. I, I have a couple of thoughts about our consent agenda. Um, it would seem to me that it would be appropriate for our new firefighters to have a separate. Council movement and um, like Mister Brian, his, his request for. For backing, uh, again, that might be appropriate for a separate vote. Um, rather than having it on the consent agenda. But that's just a thought, something to think about. Um, I wanna thank the chief. First time ever. Had a nice banquet, was good, had good time. Ate a lot of good food. I did not bid after three hundred dollars for a steak. There were a few of them that went for like seven. I'm not, not in my budget. But anyway, you did well, chief. Good job. Mister Mayor, I think I'm finished.
That's it?
I went with her. We didn't go together, we went at separate times to Discovery High School. And it really, the old teacher in me kind of got revved up again. So that was really cool. And thank you, Mister Ledbetter, for taking us. It was great.
Thank you for coming. That is something I'm wanting to do more field trips with you guys uh, to the different folks in the community, so more to come.
We, we'd like to have you uh, do some field trips with us when we go to cut firewood.
Councilman Cake?
Yes. A couple of things we have heard, uh, tomorrow we have our C O C meeting at, we have help at one thirty. There'll just be some updates, but one kind of one of the updates I'll be doing is on base camp. Um, so that'd be good to know what's going on there. Um, couple, a question on, I know, uh, Tad White was asking about um, the Black Chips. Black Smith shot, I haven't spitted it out, uh, and the vandalism and stuff like that. What would it take, I mean, if we got volunteers, could hypothetically, I know a bunch of volunteers that would. Jump in there and get that done in like two days' time at the most. Is that something that's a feasible thing to where we can get it done before this field trip? It's the. Volunteers part, I mean, and cities part.
Yeah, I think that's, all of that equipment has generally been volunteer-based through Ben Miller. And so I'm gonna make a note and I'll be in touch with you tomorrow after I talk to Ben, because that would be fabulous, because I know that it is. Yeah, we will be in touch.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So I'd really like, especially them doing a field trip on there, I'd really like to see that cleaned up and. I've watched that over the last. Forty years, probably, thirty, forty years, whenever it was built back when I was a kid, that whole section, so I really would love to see that. Kept in good shape and, and keeping in good shape. And there's been a lot of volunteer time that's went into that whole little town area there. And it has a lot of meaning for anybody that's ever wa- walked through it and read it and looked at it. It's pretty cool, it really is, so. Uh, anyways, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to get that fixed up. And last, I attended. At the Patriots meeting, I attended the, oops, my spot here, sorry. Type with me just for one second. We had um, our district attorney there, uh, they had the district attorney there at that meeting. And was discussing the um, Prop forty-seven and the appeal of Prop forty-seven that's coming about. That they're trying to get signatures on that, and it sounds like that, that appeal of that petition to re- repeal, I should say. Prop forty-seven was a good chance it will be on the ballot in November. So Prop forty-seven. If anybody's studied up, I, I encourage you to get online and study it, read about it, but basically what happened on Prop forty-seven, it, it. Basically, um, got away with any um, anybody that shoplifting, anybody doing theft of any sort. Um, drug use and whatnot, it decriminalized a lot of that, basically. And so this is basically repealing that. Um, our um, um, Kirk Andreas or District Attorney has actually been spearheading it. In here in Siski County, trying to get that repealed. And a lot of the district attorneys throughout California. Are actually trying to push this and get this going because it's done more harm than good, unfortunately. Is it a perfect fix? No, but let me read to you what this is, um, about the following crimes became misdemeanors instead of felonies. Under Prop forty-seven, shoplifting, where the value of the property stolen does not exceed nine hundred fifty dollars. Grand theft, where the value of the stolen property does not exceed nine hundred fifty dollars. Receiving stolen property, the same thing, nine hundred fifty dollars. Forgery, where the value of the forged check bond. Oh, bill does not exceed nine hundred fifty dollars. Fraud, same thing, nine hundred fifty dollars. Writing a bad check, same thing. And personal use of most illegal drugs. Petition for this repeal on this ballot, hopefully it'll have on the ballot. Um. Um, will actually, the Homelessness Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. Will reform laws that dramatically increased homelessness, drug addiction, theft throughout California. The measure will provide drug and mental health treatment for people who are addicted to hard, hard drugs such as fentanyl. Cocaine, heroin, metham- methamphetamines. Add, B, add fentanyl to the existing laws that prohibit possession of hard drugs while armed. With loaded firearms. C, add fentanyl to existing laws that prohibit the trafficking of large quantities of hard drugs. D, permit judges to use their discretion to sentence drug dealers to state prison instead of a county jail. When they're convicted of trafficking hard drugs in large quantities or are armed with firearms while engaging in drug trafficking. E, warn convicted hard drug dealers and manufacturers that they are, can be charged with murder. If they continue to traffic hard drugs and some dies as a result. F, reinstate penalties for hard drug dealers whose trafficking kills, kills or seriously injures drug users. G, increase penalties for people who repeatedly engage in theft. H, add new laws to address increasing problem of the smashing, grab thefts that are resulting in significant losses and damages. Uh, that are committed on multiple thieves working together. So this, I mean, I, I encourage everybody to read up on what Prop forty-seven did, which came out in. Two thousand fourteen, um, that we voted on unfortunately as a citizens. I don't know who voted what, but it doesn't matter. It got initiated and unfortunately, the side effects of Prop forty-seven have been one that we've been fighting all these years. Is it a perfect fix? Probably not, but it's a start on a direction to where we can hopefully start ending some of this. Um, lawlessness that's going on in our state. And hopefully, they'll figure out other fixes to. It'll coincide with this on, especially when it comes to the drug addiction and other things going on like this, so. I just thought I'd mention that. I did, like I said, I did go to that. It was, it was really neat that uh, Kirk Andreas or District Attorney. Andrea, excuse me, I don't know why I said that. Andreas, um, he presented this whole thing and did a good job. He really did, and he's, he seems to be very uh, passionate about making this uh, situation better. Uh, which we need, I think every, every county, every city and state of California would now like to fix. The problem that's going on. Um, Measure one-ten up in um, Oregon, they're having big. Um, consequences with the lack of consequences to drug addiction and drug usage. And now they're uh, feeling that, repealing that um, measure two. So I think California should start looking into that, and so I, like I said, encourage everybody to look into it, especially the council. Look into this Prop forty-seven and what it means for our law enforcement, because it does actually give our law enforcement some ability to. Start cleaning up down here, so that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cake. Councilman uh, McCoy?
Short. Um, I first want to thank Drake, Colleen, Cory and Dwayne. Um, you guys are a great council to work with. I appreciate what we're all trying to do and I thank you for your uh, time here. Um, so thank you very much.
Not quitting, are you?
No, no. But I can, I can be obstructive at times. I appreciate all four of you. I want you to know that. I want to uh, thank the chiefs, both chiefs up there and the city manager for the great work they're doing. And um, please count me in on um, uh, go, at Garan Hanan's at the disco if you, you know, if we're looking at doing some. Um, uh, it was interesting because Drake, I got to go into my old classroom at disco and uh, and, and walk into there and go where I taught before. And I thought, you know, it was kind of nice. So please, please count me in if we're, we're gonna do some mentoring or whatever.
That's it? All right, not a short and sweet. I'll thank Lieutenant. No one recognized you. Poor Pat felt left out up there, so I thank Lieutenant Dirkson for his hard work. Just kidding. He looked like a sad, looked like a sad puppy up there, gosh. Jeez, Paul. Anyways, um, let's see, uh, yeah, we went, um, I attended, uh, as well as um, Councilman Davis. To the Fire Department fundraisers. Um, Jason Ledbetter did as well and um. A great event as always, so that was great. Um. Went and visited Discovery High. It was fun seeing Garan as I grew up with him and. Um, funny as ever, you know, character and um, but learned about the challenges. I was pretty shocked at the challenges he has to deal with um, on a daily and just um. When you say a whole different picture of um, that was brought to us with the in-house students and what they're facing is um, definitely an eye-opener. Cause that's something we don't hear about usually here, the adults. So um, it was a. Definitely an eye-opener and learning experience for me, so um, thank you for putting that together. That was great. I look forward to more field trips. Haven't had a field trip since I was young, so it's nice to go back and do field trips again. Um, Lola is next week. I don't know if I'm the only one attending. Have anybody else signed up, so um. Uh, so that is next week in Mount Shasta, right? Mount Shasta's hosting, um. Next week, the ten.
It is the, yep, the ten.
April ten, Mount Shasta's hosting, so. And um, I do have to go because we are extending one item from. The board meeting on a selection we were confused about, so we're having a meeting, forgot what position it was. But anyways, we had to kind of go back and um, repost it and um, be selected a committee member for that. I forgot what it was. Um. I think that's it for me. So with that said, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody, for coming and have a great evening.
Thank you.